Good evening. I will call the November Common Council Meeting to order. All alderpersons are present with the exception of Alderperson Coth who indicated he is ill and not able to be here with us this evening. Item number three on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. I advise you to please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four on our agenda this evening is a badge pinning ceremony for newly promoted Police Department Sergeant Dean Fleisner and Lieutenant Mike Pataki. Chief, we'd like to come forward.
I'm going to call newly minted Lieutenant Mike Pataki up with his father Stan. All right, Mike has been in Wisconsin Rapids Police Department since August of 1997. He was promoted to sergeant in 2006 and has also served as the leader of our special response teams since 2005. And his father Stan is going to pin his badge on him. Where I came from, it's kind of a tradition to have your family member pin your badge on, so whenever you guys are ready.
It's with great honor and pleasure that I do this. If I can get it right.
I'll cry if he puts you.
See how tough he is.
I haven't done it for a while.
You got a new shirt, Mike?
Yeah, but I pulled the hole in earlier.
I would like to call up Sergeant Dean Fleisner and his wife Corinne. All right, Dean has been with the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department since September of 1999. Dean was promoted to canine handler with the department's first dog Diego in 2008, and he is currently the handler of our second canine dog Lex. His wife Corinne is going to pin his badge on him.
And Chief, thank you for coordinating and making this happen this evening. Item five on the agenda is the reading of the minutes of the previous regular council meeting on October 27th. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Zerflu. Is there a second? Second by Furkey. Any discussion or corrections? Alderperson Kellogg, you're first.
I don't have any corrections, but in referral last month, I requested that the YMCA and Mead School give a written report of the expenditures for their program in 2016 and 2017, and I asked for it to be in November. And I wondered if we didn't get a hold of them or...
We do have a written report of the, essentially an invoice, I think, Tim, is what I saw. I don't know if we saw, they didn't provide anything further from them at this time, but we do have some information we can send out via email to you that might suffice that.
Yeah, I guess more than the invoice, but I was interested, I guess one of the concerns we had, are there students participating from the east side or west side? And then are there students that are doing this multiple times? And I guess the impact of the program rather than just the invoice. So if they could give more detail, I think if they have that on record, it would be good for the public to see how those ones were used.
Sure. Yeah, we can make sure that it's on an agenda item, possibly consider at the end of this meeting.
In the future, okay, thanks.
Definitely maybe in December's council meeting. Thank you. Motion and a second. See no further requests to speak. Please cast your ballots. Item number six is a reading of the minutes of the previous special meeting of the council on November 7th, 2017. Attachment number two in your packets. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Move to accept.
And a motion to accept by Kellogg. Is there a second? Second by Zerflu. Any discussion? We were, it was an acknowledgement that the published minutes were incorrect in the official newspaper. A resident brought that to our attention. I don't know if you heard from other residents, but that has been acknowledged as they're correct here, I guess, for the record. So just wanted to point that out in case anyone else heard from folks. Please cast your ballots. Motion is to approve.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero a's.
Item seven, explanation of visitor speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so on items appearing before us on our agenda, in which they'll be invited to the podium to speak for no longer than five minutes. It must be acknowledged by an alderperson. Item number eight, my report. Good evening, councilmember staff and those here or watching from home. The Mayor's Youth Council has continued their work on the zoo project and have been spending time researching other municipal zoos in Wisconsin since they last met. They are collecting information such as key exhibits, types of habitats, and maintenance costs to get ideas of what could fit in the master plan process for our city zoo. They are also preparing to survey their peers and will discuss results of their findings at upcoming meetings. The recreation and community subcommittees of that group are also taking on separate projects by running our holiday coloring contest, which will coincide with the open house here at City Hall and a possible project with the bike share program. The beautification council is working on their annual winter projects. You've noticed by now that the, if you've been through downtown, on the east side, the kissing balls are on display, hanging on each of our poles, light poles. We now have four holidays entrance signs that were put up earlier this week at each city entrance, and we also did some modifications to some of the ground displays and the location. And we're also going to be adding lights to some of the trees and parks and around City Hall. The beautification council has also decorated their own tree, the Santa tree, for the annual Christmas tree walk, which is taking place at the Southwood County Historical Museum the 2nd and 3rd of December and the weekend after the 8th and 9th of December, which, if it's any indication, last year's numbers, there was well over 1,000 people that were through the museum, so well-attended and well-received event in our community. On the aquatic park development, we met with MSA yesterday to go over schedule and any modifications to the budget. They'll be sharing a Phase One with us to understand what the costs will be for the aquatic center portion, so we zero in on exactly what's the project goal that we need to raise for construction. The current schedule will have us releasing bid documents in late winter with groundbreaking to follow, of course fundraising dependent. Today, we also held the first of a series of meetings that are, of community members fundraising, forming the fundraising committee for the aquatics campaign. The purpose of this committee will not only be to keep our residents engaged and informed about the project, but also help us fill the funding gap that we face. On downtown development, we held two discussion sessions since our last council meeting with regards to the Triangle property, both with and without our developer, our prospective developer Gorman present. In the last meeting, we broke into roundtable discussions, hearing from area residents, potential tenants alike to get their input on what they would like to see and experience in that site. A few prospective tenants have come forward with the developer expected to discuss with them on December 13th with the intent to form hopefully the early confines of what might be a concept for that project to follow. As a reminder, we do have through the end of the year with that developer, and we hope to remain on track to round out another round of discussions with them shortly after some more discussions in December. The planning commission, as you'll see in the report, the zoning rewrite continues to move forward. A near final draft will be available on December 11th after that meeting, so pencil in some bedtime reading on the proposed zoning code. It's incredibly extensive and it's the full rewrite, so it's going to require a bit of review from yourselves to ensure that we met and the wishes of the community are reflected in that project. The Rapids Mall redevelopment, we assisted a few tenants with discussions on relocation opportunities and resources available to them. So far, two have secured sites, both Rapid Rehab and the Aquarium Pet Shop. We've all read and I shared with you recently that the Bethesda corporate offices indicated they will not be relocating due to low profitability to afford a new site and the inability to pay management staff as they operate solely on volunteers to run that store. We understand the YMCA will be closing on the property, officially taking ownership in the coming days. And just a quick note on the 2018 budget process, I want to express appreciation to each of you for attending the first budget meeting. I think that was the first meeting in my tenure where we've had every single council member's present for... I'll just bear's mentioning that I felt like it was a very productive process to have everybody at a meeting so we could get through the high-level points with Tim and I and answer any questions that might be on the front end. I just felt like it seemed to be a bit more productive from that standpoint, so thank you for attending that first meeting. Events attended, held a visit here in the council chambers from Washington School students, spoke to Lincoln High School students about career in government, actually with Alderperson Zerflu, who was there wearing a couple of hats, to Lincoln High School students, attended the economic summit held at Sam Valley to discuss their 2017 season and what's to come for 2018. Just a data point that I found quite interesting, in the first year of that project being open, they saw over 20,000, or they had 20,000 rounds of golf played. Aaron Hills, for comparison, if you follow any of the golf stuff, Aaron Hills had 15,000 rounds played finally in their 10th year. So in the Sam Valley's first year, there were 5,000 more rounds of golf played than 10 years, it took 10 years for Aaron Hills to achieve. So, you know, getting a slice of that economic impact and opportunity is something that we continue to look at and see how we can, you know, get a slice of it for our own community's benefit. Spoke to Chamber IT Bus Tour. The Chamber is hosting these bus tours at Renaissance and other IT-focused businesses to get high school students interested, number one, in returning to this community after they go off to college, or maybe even sticking around for technical college education here as our employers desperately need a pipeline for new talent. There's, as you commonly have heard probably in your places of work or others, that it's difficult to attract and retain talent, that everyone's facing the talent shortage. The Chamber Leadership Program came and talked with, I know with Adam, hosted a walking visit of some projects downtown. But we also held a visit to talk about the aquatics project, hosted the workforce deputy secretary to Rapids about a week or so ago now. Went to Platteville on Friday with the YMCA and Legacy Foundation to discuss the new markets tax credits that the project will be applying for and how we might be able to get a slice of new markets for projects that we've been talking about, whether it's a triangle or even improvements to Centralia. River Seas Clubhouse, if you're familiar with that program, celebrated their fourth anniversary. They invited me to attend their anniversary celebration. It's a great program for at-risk folks as well as a group that just doesn't necessarily have a place to convene in the community. Final reminder that Rekindle the Spirit is being held tomorrow night, lighting ceremony at 5:45 with the parade to follow downtown. I also have to mention, since I've gotten some contact from residents about it, and maybe you have too, a new project is being built by a volunteer group here in town to replace the one that was heavily damaged last year by the two high-wind events. They're hoping to have it done, but there is no guarantee of a timeline that it may get put back up yet this year. So know that, and then information will be relayed through Matt at Park. So if you have questions, you can directly go to Matt on that to get a status update. And then finally, we're holding our annual holiday open house on December 14th here in the lobby and council chambers from 3:30 to 5:30. It's a Thursday evening. The Lincoln High School Chamber Choir will be here, and then we'll be accepting food and cash donations for Family Center Boys and Girls Club and the Fireman's Toy Drive as we've done in the, in previous years. So with that, that concludes my report. Number nine, new business. Item A is a public hearing on the 2018 city budget. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on the topic of the 2018 city budget? Okay, okay. Okay, we understand there might be some audio issues that they're working on, on the recording, so folks don't have to call and notify us that we are aware of the issue, I guess, I'm just told up here. All right, anyone wishing to speak on the topic of the city budget? With seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And let's see, help me, we've got the, item C is where the actual action on that, right? So B and C.
Right, but I think you're going to do the B.
Oh, right, thank you. Okay. We'll move on to item number, letter B then, 9B. Consider resolution number 30-2017, setting the equivalent unit ERU charge for the Stormwater Management Utility Fund. See resolution number three in your packet. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'd make a motion to adopt resolution number 30 for the setting the equivalent unit ERU charge for the Stormwater Management Utility Fund.
Motion by Furkey and a second by Dolan. And I probably should just indicate what's in that resolution for folks. Essentially, the 2018 budget proposes increasing the annual equivalent residential unit from $32.04 to $33 in effective January 1st. All right, any discussion? Seeing no requests to speak? Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero a's.
9C. Consider resolution number 31-2017, adopting the tax levy in 2018 City of Wisconsin Rapids budget. See the resolution, attachment number four in your packets. And I'll go ahead and read this resolution since it's fairly short and it's an important one. Whereas the Finance and Property Committee approved the 2018 City of Wisconsin Rapids budget at the November 14th meeting, 2017 meeting, whereas on November 3rd, 2017 pursuant to Chapter 65.90 of the Wisconsin State Statutes, the city published a notice in the Wisconsin Rapids Daily Tribune of a public hearing on the proposed 2018 budget to be held, it looks like there's some words cut off here, to be... I'm in the City Hall council chambers. Whereas the city held a public hearing on the proposed 2018 budget at its November 21st, 2017 council meeting. Now, being resolved that the budget for the year 2018, as stated in the public hearing document dated November 21st, 2017, be and the same is hereby adopted in the sum of Be the same is hereby levied and assessed against all taxable property, both real and personal within the City of Wisconsin Rapids, Wisconsin for the year 2017. Be it further resolved that the appropriate tax rate be established and applied to the valuation of property in the city as certified by the state so as to raise the required amount of $29,122,678.87. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 31, 2017.
Motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Furkey. We'll move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak? Please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero a's.
Thank you. Item nine under new business, 9D. First reading of the ordinance repealing section 6.24 of the municipal code, which provided that the engineering department would locate locked corners for a fee. This ordinance was recommended at the Public Works Committee meeting on November 7th, 2017, item number four. See the ordinance, attachment number five. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item? A motion by Raum. And a second by HEP. Any discussion on the motion, on the item? A request to speak. See no requests to speak? Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero a's.
9E under new business. First reading of an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 5 of the municipal code, water and sewers as it relates to installment payments for deferred special assessments. Approval was given to proceed, but with an amendment to the original, of the ordinance at the council meeting on June 21st, 2016, but an ordinance was never brought before the council. See the ordinance, attachment number six in your packets. A motion by Raum. And second by Kellogg. Any discussion on that item? Seeing... Alderpersons, Zerflu, you're first.
Quickly, I do remember this last summer, and I guess it just took this long to be put together or...
There was a recommendation at the Public Works meeting in either May or June 2016, and then that recommendation, once it got to the council, there was no physical order...
Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero a's.
I had a member 10 report of the Planning Commission meeting held on November, sorry, Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on October 16th, 2017, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Members present included myself, Shane Burkhardt, Fran Aaron, Lee Tao, Joe Terry, and Alderperson Todd Furkey. Member absent was Tim Burkhauser. Others in attendance are Adam Tagan, Charlie Handy, and Tim Schweki of Civitech. The meeting was called order at 4:00 PM. Item one was an update and discussion on the zoning rewrite project with Civitech. The commission reviewed the language of the zoning code as it relates to tying the comprehensive plan to the zoning map. Item two was update and discussion on the comprehensive plan update with Civitech. The initial draft for the new future land use map was reviewed and compared to the current version. The commission made suggested changes based on the goals of the city and their local knowledge. Item three was review of proposed changes to the zoning code as it relates to solar power. The commission reviewed proposed language to amend section 1102 and 1107, number 10 of the zoning code as presented, attachment number one of that meeting. And in our packets, clarification on the airport height restrictions was requested. Staff will draft the formal code amendment language and present it at the November Planning Commission meeting. Item four was adjournment. There was a motion by Aaron, second by Tao to adjourn. Motion carried 6-0, and that meeting adjourned at 5:36 PM. Council members, what are your wishes regarding item number 10?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Dolan. Any requests to speak on that item? Seeing no requests to speak?
Motion carried, seven i's, zero a's.
Item 11, report of the Planning Commission meeting held on November 6th. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on November 6th in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Members present included myself, Fran Aaron, Lee Tao, Joe Terry, and Alderperson Todd Furkey. Members absent were Tim Burkhauser and Shane Burkhardt. Others in attendance included Adam Tagan, Brett Solschreiter, and others listed on the sign-in sheet on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called order at 4:00 PM. Approval of the reports, item one is approval of the reports from the September 11th, 18th, and October 16th Planning Commission meetings. There was a motion and second to approve those reports, and that motion carried unanimously. Item two was maps and plaits received. Item A was Riverview Hospital Association, CSM. The applicant was requesting a certified survey map for the combination of two parcels into one parcel, one new parcel and dedication of property as public road right-of-way. The subject properties are located at 1121 Hill Street and 432 Dewey Street. There was a motion by Furkey, second by Aaron, to approve the request subject to dedication of three foot of property on Dewey Street to satisfy the 66-foot right-of-way as mapped. That motion carried unanimously. Item three was a public hearing on Plan 170919, Johnny Alexander, Southwood County YMCA. The applicant is requesting a planned unit development, PUD, within the B2 General Commercial District. The PUD may include public or semi-public uses, medical facilities, residential uses, and other commercial uses. Subject properties are approximately 12 acres and are located on the northeast corner of West Riverview Expressway and Hale Street. Properties are commonly known as 231 West Grand, West Riverview Expressway, 730 Hale Street, 223 West Riverview Expressway, and 555 West Grand Avenue. The public hearing was opened at 4:04 PM. Adam Tagan provided an overview of the requests and procedures... Adam Tagan provided an overview of the requests and procedure for the planned unit development. Speaking in favor was Brett Salschider from the Southwood County YMCA. Speaking against was, no one was present, present speaking against. Public hearing on plan one-seven-zero-nine-one-nine was closed at four-ten P.M. Item four, action on plan one-seven-zero-nine-one-nine Johnny Alexander, Southwood County YMCA, planned unit development within the B-two General Commercial District. Motion by Furkey, second by Tao, to approve the request, subject to thirteen revised conditions of approval recommended by staff and attached to this report. And that motion carried unanimously. Item five was public hearing on plan one-seven-zero-nine-two-three, Community Development Department. The applicant is requesting an amendment to chapter eleven zoning. Specifically, the amendment relates to the regulation of solar power systems within the city. Public hearing was opened at four-thirty-three P.M. Speaking in favor was Adam Tagan, and no one was present speaking against. Public hearing was closed at four-thirty-six P.M. Item six was action on Community Development Department zoning code amendment relating to solar power systems. There was a motion by Aaron, second by Furkey, to approve the plan as presented, and that motion carried unanimously. Item seven, a public hearing on plan one-seven-zero-nine-two-four, Community Development Department. The applicant is requesting an amendment to chapter eleven zoning. Specifically, the amendment relates to the regulation of temporary uses as it pertains to the sale of produce within residential districts. The public hearing was opened at four-thirty-seven P.M. Speaking in favor was Mike Arnold from twelve-fifty Baker Street, and no one was present speaking against. That public hearing was closed at four-forty P.M. Item number eight, action on plan one-seven-zero-nine-two-four, Community Development Department, the zoning code amendment relating to the sale of produce as temporary, as a temporary use. Motion by Terry with no second to approve as presented, the motion died due to a lack of second. Motion by Aaron, second by Vruwink, to table the action until December fourth, two thousand and seventeen, meeting and to ask staff to propose alternative draft language, and that motion carried unanimously. Item nine was adjournment, motion by Tao, second by Furkey, to adjourn, and that motion carried unanimously with the meeting adjourned at five P.M. We do have item number four, we have to hold out item number four due to the resolution that's associated with, with that item, which is...
Adam did pass it out.
Adam did pass it out, right. Okay. So everyone does have that resolution separately from their packet. So it'd be the balance of the report with the exception of item number four, unless there's other items others have concern with. Council members, what are your wishes? Oh, Adam, go ahead.
Sorry, just hearing you give the summary, I noticed there was a typo. The next meeting of the commission is actually December eleventh, so that's when that other text amendment will be considered regarding sale of produce in residential districts.
Thank you. Okay. Alder Person Zurflue, you're first.
Adam, I got a call about that, the selling produce on your property, basically, and I told the gentleman, same thing what you did, just to deal with you. I guess, are there concerns with allowing it? Because I hadn't really heard that way. I just heard concerns that, why he couldn't sell pumpkins specifically.
Well, our department did receive complaint about that use. That's why it was, we stopped by and basically brought it to his attention, that there's nothing that allows him to do it. So that's what spurred this whole discussion on whether or not it should be allowed. Has it been a huge public outcry? No. But like I said, since it's not allowed right now, that's why the discussion is happening at the actual meeting, and after the notice, no one showed up to the actual meeting to present concerns on it. If I can summarize the Plan Commission concerns, it's just a discussion on whether or not you want to expand any commercial into a residential district, and if so, should there be some more language in there that kind of tightens it up more than just the more general language that was presented.
Okay.
Any further requests to speak? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion on that report. A motion to approve by Zurflue, and a second by Kellogg. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
And item number four, which was held out due to an amendment. Adam, do you want to speak to that item? The resolution, which will be resolution number thirty-two, if you're interested in the number on that resolution. Adam?
When this PUD was originally published, for consideration, it was under consideration of multiple uses on that. During the discussion at the Plan Commission, there was some concern on opening up, it up to multiple uses without having a specific project to consider. So that's why the original PUD, or resolution that was contained in the packet, that's how that was drafted, based on what the Plan Commission had recommended. Over the last week or so, we've been approached by the YMCA and another developer who has presented a potential residential development on one of those outlots. So basically to allow that flexibility, or at least a limited amount of flexibility, that's why we're recommending this additional language be added to the PUD. I would note that any, if that residential development does move forward, there would be at least probably two opportunities for the council to review that. One would be if there's any involvement on the city as far as land acquisition, and the second would be it would require site plan approval in addition to this PUD approval. So by adding this language, it is not rubber stamping or allowing residential development there, it's just basically providing that first step in the process. And then the other thing I would note is the base zoning that exists there, which is B-two General Commercial, does normally allow residential by right. It's only because of the PUD language where we are tightening it up and adding specific uses that we needed to make this tweak. But if it was, again, just a normal residential development, they could locate there as it sits today.
And maybe just a quick comment on that front, since it was a very recent addition since the last Planning Commission meeting, when the zoning piece was mentioned, we did have some more discussions on that just this week, which may necessitate, Adam or I will send a synopsis to the council tomorrow, but there, it may require a special meeting or even a special meeting of the council to discuss it. So watch, watch your email for details on that, as it, as it may require a meeting in the next, not this week, but the following week, to discuss or consider what might, might become of those, that opportunity. Okay. So thanks, Adam, for sharing that information. I don't have a motion on the floor, so I'd be open to taking a motion on the item.
Move to accept.
A motion to accept by Kellogg, is there a second? Second by HEP. Any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
Item twelve, standing council committee reports. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee meetings held the twenty-fourth, B the seventh, C the fourteenth. Alder Person Zurflue, go to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I should read these separately. Report of the Finance and Property Committee meeting, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen. The Finance Property Committee met at four-thirty P.M. on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen, in the first floor conference room at the City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Mayor Vruwink, Tim DeSorcey, Alder Person Kubashak, Coth, Raum, Kellogg, Furkey, and also Heather Dorr. The meeting was called to order at four-forty P.M. Item number two, two thousand and eighteen budget reviewed, the two thousand and eighteen budget was reviewed. Item three, set next meeting date, the next Finance Property Committee meeting will be on Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand and seventeen. Item four, an open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under section nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. There was a motion and a second to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken. All members voting in the affirmative. Motion carried unanimously. Sub A, in closed session, the committee will discuss a request from Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater to lease space in the Centralia Center. In closed session, the committee discussed a request from Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater Incorporated to lease space in the Centralia Center. Item number five was adjournment. The committee adjourned in closed session at six-fifteen P.M. And that is the end of that report.
Council members, what are your wishes regarding that report?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Dolan, is there a second? Second by Furkey. Any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
Item B, number twelve.
The Finance Property Committee, again, met at five P.M. on Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. A list of others in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at five P.M. Item two, consider for approval the two thousand and eighteen Water Works and Lighting Commission budget. There was a motion and a second to approve the two thousand and eighteen Water Works and Lighting Commission budget. That motion carried unanimously. Item three, review two thousand and eighteen City of Wisconsin Rapids budget. The two thousand and eighteen City of Wisconsin Rapids budget was reviewed. The review focused primarily on the East River Bank project. No action was taken on this item. Item four, set next meeting date, the next regularly scheduled Finance Property Committee meeting will be at five P.M. on November fourteenth. Item five was adjournment. There was a motion and a second to adjourn. Motion carried unanimously, and the meeting adjourned at five-fifty-two P.M. And I'll make a motion to accept this report.
Motion to approve by Zurflue, is there a second? Second by Kellogg? Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
Thank you. Item twelve, C.
And the report of the Finance and Property Committee, which met at five P.M. on Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, in the first floor conference room at the City Hall. All members were present. Also in attendance, Mayor Zach Vruwink, Sue Schill, Tim DeSorcey, Joe Terry, and Alder Person Kellogg. The meeting was called to order at five P.M. Item two, consider approval of a request from the Mead Witter Foundation for permission to proceed with repairs to the memorial clock and bell tower. There was a motion and a second to approve a request from the Mead Witter Foundation for permission to proceed with repairs to the memorial clock and bell tower. Motion carried unanimously. The repairs include the following: inspections on circular granite plaques by Appleton Marble and Granite Works in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars; installation of auto winders by Mechanical Watch Supply in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars; relocation of bell clapper; reengineering of doors, hatches; rerouting cables; painting of a new service door; installation of a cylinder assist in the main hatch; redesign of clock gear hands; caulking the outside clock face by Shopmaster LLC in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and seven dollars; various electrical repairs by Van R. Electric in the amount of five thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-two Item three, consider a request to support a Major League Baseball Scots Field refurbishment program grant. It was moved by Zurflue, second by Dolan, to support the MLB Scots Field refurbishment program grant, if applied for by one of the local baseball softball, five-oh-one C-threes, for funds for improvements for Mead Field, which will need to be consistent with the City of Wisconsin Rapids Mead Field Master Plan, and approved by the city. The city will write a letter of support for the grant application if needed. That motion carried unanimously. Item four, review and consider for approval the two thousand and eighteen Mass Transit Operating and Capital Grant application and corresponding budget request. Moved by Dolan, second by HEP, to approve the two thousand and eighteen Mass Transit Operating and Capital Grant application and corresponding budget request of fourteen thousand one thirty-one, with a capital in reserve of thirteen thousand two eighty-seven. That motion carried unanimously. Item five, final review and approval of the two thousand and eighteen City of Wisconsin Rapids budget. Motion as second to approve the two thousand and eighteen City of Wisconsin Rapids budget as presented. Motion carried unanimously. Item six, audit of the bills for October two thousand and seventeen. There was a motion and a second to approve check numbers six-nine-six-five-five through six-nine-nine-five-four, and manual checks nine-nine-four-seven-two through nine-nine-four-nine-one. That motion carried unanimously. Item number seven, review and consider for approval beverage operator license applications. There was a motion as second to approve the beverage operator license applications as presented. Motion carried unanimously. There is a list of the beverage operator license applications that were approved. Item number eight, set next meeting date, the next regular Finance and Property Committee will be December twelfth at five P.M. Item nine, an open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under section nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. There was a motion as second to go into closed section, closed session. A roll call vote was taken. All committee members responded aye. Motion carried unanimously. Sub A, in closed session, the committee will discuss a request from Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater to lease space in the Centralia Center. In closed session, the committee discussed the request. Item number ten, adjourned. There was a motion and a second to adjourn. Carried unanimously, and the meeting adjourned at five-forty-three P.M.
Alder Person, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'd make a motion to approve.
A motion by Furkey, is there a second? Second by Kellogg? Are there any requests to speak? And just a quick note on item three of the report, which is the grant for the MLB Scots Field. I learned that they did not end up submitting the grant, as they were not able to line up a five-oh-one C-three that they were required to have lined up. So just as a note for all of you, that they weren't able to get that piece in order. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
Item number twelve, D. Report of the Public Works Committee meeting held on November seventh. Alder Person Raum, floor is yours.
Public Works Committee met at six P.M. on Tuesday, November seventh, in the first floor of the City Hall. All members were present. The list...
Tom, could you hear your microphone? I don't know if you're a microphone. I don't want to send people for a loop thinking our audio's...
Okay. Public Works Committee met at six P.M. on Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. The list of all others attending is on file in the clerk's office. Item one, the meeting was called to order, the meeting was called to, called to order by Chairperson Raum at six-oh-two P.M. Item two, review the D.P.W. report. Public Works Director Joe Terry reviewed the report. Item number three, request from Chad Borquart to install angle parking along Second Street South in the area of five-twenty-one Second Street South. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Coth to approve the request to install angle parking along Second Street South in the area of five-twenty-one Second Street South at the owner's, Chad Borquart, expense contingent upon meeting the specifications of the city engineer. With unanimous consent, it was so ordered that the motion be amended. Kellogg moved to approve the request to install angle parking along Second Street South in the area of five-twenty-one Second Street South, contingent upon meeting the specifications of the city engineer. The motion was seconded by Coth. Financing of the project will be considered, but at the Public Works meeting in December, the motion carried unanimously. Item four, consider removing lot corner marking from the east, from the list of engineering services. It was moved by Raum and seconded by Coth for goal providing the lot corner location service from the list of engineering services. The motion carried unanimously. Item five, consider real estate consultant proposals for acquisition and negotiation services for the East Grand Avenue project from Third Street to Eighth Street. At the time of the meeting, there are no real estate consultant proposals to consider. Item six, review proposed changes to assessment procedures and consider ordinance and policy revisions. It was moved by Coth and seconded by Raum to approve an ordinance repealing and recreating section two-point-one-four of municipal code specifying assessment procedures relating to public construction projects. Motion carried unanimously. It was moved by Coth and seconded by Kellogg to approve an engineering department policy setting the method by which special assessments are charged. Motion carried unanimously. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by... It's moved by Kellogg and seconded by Coth to approve and ordinance repealing and recreating section 6.03, parent five of the Municipal Code modifying assessment procedures related to the curb and gutter repairs. The motion carried unanimously. It's moved by Coth and seconded by Rayom to approve and ordinance repealing and recreating section 5.03, parent two, of the Municipal Code modifying assessment procedures related to water and sewer extensions. Motion carried unanimously. Item seven, review the referral list. Items number 25, 26, and 27 were removed, removed from the list, and an item was added to the referral list, and that was to consider placing a stop sign at the intersection of 15th Place South and Rosewood Avenue, although the exact placement of the sign is still unclear. Item eight was motion adjourned, it was moved by Coth, seconded by Rayom to adjourn, the motion carried, the meeting adjourned at 7:09 PM. With that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of that report.
We have a motion to approve by Rayom and a second by Kellogg. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
Item 12E is report of the Public Works Committee meeting held on November 21st.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 5:45 PM on Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present except Alder Person Coth, who was excused. List of others attending is on file in the clerk's office. Item one was to consider real estate consultant proposals for acquisition and negotiation services for the East Grand Avenue project from Third Street to Eighth Street. It was removed, it was moved by Rayom and seconded by Kellogg to approve the proposal from Right Way Professionals for turnkey real estate services for the East Grand Avenue project from Third Street to Eighth Street. Motion carried. Item two, it was moved by Rayom, seconded by Kellogg to adjourn, the motion carried, the meeting adjourned at 5:52 PM. And with that, Your Honor, I move for approval of the report.
A motion to approve by Rayom, is there a second? Second by Furkey? Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
12F, report of the Human Resources Committee held on November 7th. Alder Person Furkey?
Thank you, Mayor. The Human Resources Committee met November 7th at 3:30 in the third floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Also present were Sue Schill, Mayor Vruwink, Tim DeSorcey, Debbie Nash, and Paul Shubelsky. Item one was called to order, it was, the meeting was called to order at 3:34. Item number two was consider elected officials' salaries for terms beginning in April and May of 2018. Those elected officials would have been, will be the mayor, city clerk, city attorney, and Alder Persons. No action was taken on this item. The item will be considered at the Human Resources Committee meeting on December 5th. Item number three was consider request to approve the job description and pay grade for a finance support specialist position. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg to approve the job description and grade five salary placement, which is a minimum of $41,608, midpoint $47,075 for the finance support specialists. And that motion carried unanimously. Item number fourA, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under section 19.85, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or the conducting or other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. It was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg, by Kubasak, to go into closed session pursuant to section 19.85, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes. A roll call vote was taken. The motion carried unanimously. Item B, in closed session, the committee will discuss negotiation strategy and proposals for successor labor agreements with the IAFF Local 425 and the WRPPA. In closed session, the committee discussed negotiation strategy and proposals for successor labor agreements with the IAFF Local 425 and the WRPPA. Number five, the committee will adjourn in closed session, and it was moved by Furkey and seconded by Kellogg to adjourn. That motion carried. The meeting adjourned in closed session at 4:42 PM. With that, I will move for adoption.
A motion to approve by Alder Person Furkey, second by Kubasak. Any further, or any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
Item 13, miscellaneous reports. Item one, the Southwood County Airport Commission held on, meetings held on October 5th and November 2nd. Item two, Housing Authority meeting held on September 27th. Item three, the McMillan Library Board of Trustees meeting held on October 18th. Item four, the Police and Fire Commission held on October 11th. Item five, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Monthly Report for October. Item six, the Wastewater Treatment Commission held on November 1st. Alder Persons, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
I'll make a motion to approve and place on file.
Motion by Furkey, is there a second? Second by Kellogg? Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven i's, zero n's.
Item 14, referral of communications to committees. Are there any referral of communication? Alder Person Kubasak?
Yeah, I got a referral for a driveway widening for the Public Works Committee. How should I do that? I had a resident contact me. Should I put something in writing as far as what they're requesting for the next committee meeting?
Sure, you can contact me or email me. There's also a form that our IT department has created that you should have access to, but either want to work. Thank you.
Are there any referral of communication to committees? Alder Person Kellogg?
I don't have a referral, but I represent the Common Council on the Convention Visitors Bureau, and I'm excited to share with you that tomorrow, there's a store opening on First Street. It's called Local on First, and it's kind of a concept of a consignment store of goods produced in Wisconsin Rapids. So the Convention and Visitors Bureau is promoting the goods, and we're excited. So grand opening tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00, and it's located near Karen's, Weinzenstein, in that area. Second, I want to mention too, I'm representing the Common Council on the McMillan Public Library Board, and they're initiating a fundraising. They have to match, there's a donor of $70,000, and we have to match that in six years for the solar panels. And donations are accepted now and are tax exempt, and that's why I want to share it now in case anybody's interested. And one panel, they could purchase for $125 as a donation, and they would get recognition as a result of those donations, so I wanted to mention that. And also, the board asked me to thank the Common Council for the budget, where it's interesting, I found out that there's like 20,000 people, not 20,000 individuals that come and go each month through the library doors, or 250,000 a year, and the lavatories were in poor condition, and the budget, the Common Council decided in their wisdom to remodel those lavatories that were in poor condition, and they wanted me to extend a thank you to the Common Council for that budget request.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak? Seeing no further referrals, we'll move into 15, I believe it is, for adjournment. Got a motion by Zerflu? Is there a second? Second by Kubasak, all in favor? Stand adjourned. Have a happy Thanksgiving, and good rest of your week.